For tax assessor from Rico, USA. Five, approve amendment to resolution R dash zero two two one zero four for in the additional amount of nine hundred and thirty-three dollars for rehabilitation matters. Six, authorize payment for nine-one-one emergency communication and radio dispatching services for the police department with Rutgers University. Seven, authorize application, acceptance, and execution of grant for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two for the police department for a safety enforcement and education fund grant. Eight, approve resolution supporting the Equality Act. Nine, approve award of contract with Rogers Group. Ten, approve amendment of resolution R dash zero three two zero three zero to extend contract for additional twelve months with Elijah's Promise for food prep with the senior center. Eleven, approve amendment of resolution R dash one two two zero zero six and the additional amount of one hundred and ninety-nine dollars to pay final invoice for tax water and sewer billing. Twelve, approve amendment of resolution R dash zero one two one five six. This is a change order for a water main replacement. Thirteen, approve award of contract for temperature control HVAC maintenance and repairs with Peterson Service Company. Fourteen, approve amendment of resolution R dash zero two two zero four two. This is a change order with MSP Construction Corporation again for water main replacement projects. Fifteen, release of site performance guarantee in the amount of eleven thousand eighty-four dollars and forty cents for the balance of inspection fee of one thousand seven hundred forty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents to Colgate paper. Sixteen, approve person-to-person and place-to-place transfer of a pocket liquor license. Seventeen has been pulled. Eighteen, authorized purchase by housing inspections under New Jersey State approved co-op. Six-five M C E S C C P S, the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Pricing System. Nineteen, approve emergency temporary appropriations for two thousand twenty-one. Twenty, approve relaxation of city noise ordinance and road closure. Twenty-one, approve amendment of resolution R dash zero five one six two three to amend schedule payments for professional services. Twenty-two, approve amendment of resolution R dash one zero one nine five seven to certify funds for, I believe this is a certified fund for inspections in the amount of five thousand dollars for cleaning of a lot. And twenty-three, authorization to accept grant from the county of Middlesex for a Code Blue warming center. Then we have items for discussion by council, an OEM update, public comment. Page to remember, the next city council meeting is March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. And then now the meeting will please come to order while the clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Here.
Council President Socorro Ludwig.
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied, and that the annual notice would give sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the City of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on an appropriate bulletin board and posted in the back vestibule of City Hall, visible to the public through the windows in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, namely the home news Tribune. Additionally, a forty-eight hour notice of time, place, and manner of conducting this meeting has been made by the city clerk on March first, two thousand twenty-one, as is required by law.
The city council intends to meet on a regular schedule and will meet the guidelines of the Open Public Meetings Act by utilizing a telephonic conferencing system through which the public may participate. The public is encouraged to call into the conference system through the phone numbers and access codes transmitted in the forty-eight hour notice. During the portions of the meeting that are not open for public comment, all callers of the public will be muted. During the public comment period, those who have interest in addressing the council will be first organized by last name and called upon to speak one time and for no longer than five minutes during each public comment portion of the meeting. A timer would chime at the completion of each five-minute period, and the speaker will be notified if the time has expired. Public meeting accessing assistance, I'm sorry, public meeting assistance access in the calling number should call City Hall at seven three two seven four five five zero zero seven.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please join me in a moment of silence to reflect and honor our military personnel and law enforcement officers who dedicate their lives to protect our freedom, safety, and democracy. May God guide them faithfully in their duties. Thank you.
Motion to accept a minute?
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Socorro Ludwig.
Yeah.
Madam Clerk, has the correspondence been directed to the appropriate department?
Yes, Madam President, the correspondence received by the city clerk's office has been forwarded to the appropriate department for further action.
Thank you. We have no public hearings tonight, and we have no ordinances on second reading, ordinances on search reading. One, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick Title X, Vehicles and Traffic, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Section ten point one six point two one zero, Schedule three eight, time limit parking areas, and Section ten point one six point zero five zero, Schedule two nine, time limit parking, parking meters for Easton Avenue.
Move the ordinance sitting down Wednesday, seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one at five thirty, same day we advertise.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes. Next, we have an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick Title X, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter ten point one two, Traffic Control Regulations, Section ten point one two point one six zero, Schedule one eight, right turn on red light prohibited for Hamilton Street and Lewis Street.
Move the ordinance sitting down Wednesday, March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one at five thirty, same day to be advertised.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes. And then last, we have an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick Title seventeen, zoning for implementation of reexamination recommendations.
Move the ordinance sitting down Wednesday, March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one at five thirty, same day to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes. Next, we have resolutions one through twenty-three, excluding seventeen. And at this time, we're preparing to open the meeting for the public comment on resolutions only for up to five minutes per person, one time. Madam Clerk, will you please prepare a list?
Yes, Council President. If any members of the public wish to speak on the resolutions only, please state your name when the appropriate letter of the alphabet is called.
Unmuted.
E through H. I through L.
Charlie Cradaville.
Okay, Mr. Cradaville.
Did you hear me there?
Yes.
Danielle Moore.
Okay, Ms. Moore, thank you. Q through T. U V. W through Z.
Just want to make sure you got me, Charlie Cradaville.
Yes, Mr. Cradaville. Is there anyone A through Z who wishes to address the council? This will be the last call, A through Z, if you wish to speak on the resolutions only. Madam President, speaker on the list is Mr. Charlie Cradaville.
Thank you. Mr. Cradaville, can you please state your name, spell your last name for the record and address?
Charlie Cradaville, K-R-A-T-O-V-I-L. I live on Sedan Street. I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today. First one is number six, the contract with Rutgers for police dispatch and communications. Could maybe Deputy Director Miller confirm that this is going well, and that's why it's continuing?
I can confirm that it is going well, and it's still cost-effective with no detriment to the city, so that's why we're continuing the service.
Move on to page two, number eleven, the, I guess, the final invoice for this company providing software and support services for the tax water and sewer billing. Can you confirm that you're going to be, or maybe you already are offering, the ability to pay online with a credit card? Is that up and running yet?
I'm not sure that that has anything to do with this resolution. Mr. Jewellis, would you like to address that?
Sure. This resolution, the request, this resolution is to pay for invoices for work that's been completed in support of the utility. Regarding Mr. Cradaville's question on credit card processing, that's still a function that the city is working to complete unrelated to this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Jewellis.
Okay. I'll move on, page four at the top, the liquor license transfer. Can you tell me, I believe this is the liquor license that was associated with the old Bennigan's? Can you tell me who is acquiring it and if it's going to be in use?
Madam Clerk, could you please address this issue?
Yes, Council President. So the transfer is actually going to be from a pocket license to another pocket license. Mr. Patel, who will be the owner at the moment, does not have a location.
Gotcha. And do you know the sale price?
One hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Great, thank you. Wanted to ask the council for your insights into number seventeen, the thing that you're referring to the planning board regarding retail sale of cannabis. Is this something that you support? Is this, you know, making way for the legal retail sale of cannabis, or is this something that's restricting it or preventing it?
Mr. Cradaville, that's been pulled from the agenda for tonight's meeting.
I see Virgona Crane Company, who was responsible for the crane disaster in the summer of two thousand nineteen, is requesting permission to close a road and, you know, exceed the noise ordinance. Can you tell me, maybe Mr. Valenti, if you've had any conversations with this company about their safety practices, and if you're confident that the same mistakes won't be made that led to that disaster that could have been, you know, could have been fatal?
Mr. Valenti, is there something you'd like to address? I know it's outside the parameters of this particular ordinance resolution.
The crane company that Mr. Cradaville referred to is current with all their federal and state licensing. They have to meet high levels of security and as well as safety measures. That is managed by the State Department of Labor, and they do not take that lightly. So if the licenses are current, the insurance is current, the whole harmoses are current, then we have no reason for denial.
Okay. Well, as far as the permits go, but you don't have to relax the noise ordinance for them, and I mean, maybe the street closure is required, but certainly you don't have to let them start early. But I'll move on to the final resolution. I did want to just ask, what is the city promising to do in exchange for this ninety-thousand-dollar grant? Are we finally going to have a Code Blue warming center that is in line with the state law and its intention to have facilities like it open whenever it's thirty-two degrees or lower?
Just, thank you, Mr. Cradaville. I'll address that question or that comment. And in accepting this grant, it actually puts our program in the hands of the county, and we will be following the thirty-two-degree requirement for that. Who's next on the list, Madam Clerk?
Council President, the next person on the list is Ms. Danielle Moore.
Thank you. Ms. Moore, can you please say your name, spell your last name, and your address for the record? Okay.
Ms. Moore, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, you can, thank you.
Hello?
Thank you.
Do you hear her?
Yes, we can hear you now.
I had to press star six four times.
Muted.
Wrong with your system.
Okay, well, we can hear you now. Would you please state your name, spell your last name for the record, and your address, please?
Danielle Moore, three thirty-three Somerset Street.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, the floor is yours.
I would like to just ask a question for this number twenty with the crane. Is this what Robin Wood Johnson building another part of the building on French Street?
This is for their ongoing maintenance and upkeep for the HVAC systems that they have to do to stay in compliance with federal laws, from what I understand.
So this has nothing to do with the new proportion that Robin Wood is building on French Street?
Mr. Valenti, can you confirm that?
This is a one-day fix to replace heating and ventilation units on the upper roof at the hospital. It's done on a weekend, as is very common. We probably have done dozens of these in the last several years, so as not to impact the traffic, because you have to close Somerset Street directly in front of the main entrance of the hospital. So this is upkeep and maintenance to the existing building.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Then number twenty-two, what is the five thousand dollars to clean? What is that for?
This is a property on Gooddale Circle that the city has to come in and clean.
So basically, like, almost the same thing you had to do for the house on Jones Avenue, or is this something different?
No, yes, Ms. Moore, I believe it's very similar to that situation.
Okay. And then the last thing, that's what the Code Blue with the ninety thousand dollars. I have to say, I hope this will be, this will be put in a good situation. Now, it's good to hear that this is due to where thirty-two degrees with this Code Blue, because after Mr. Jones said, wow, New Brunswick has the best Code Blue, after what happened two weeks ago, even though I wasn't able to comment on it, it's very sad, and I will get to that through the public meeting, but I do hope it's good to hear, and I hope the rules will be followed, with you, President, saying that, okay, this is a thirty-two-degree Code Blue now. That is so good to hear, and I hope it will work out that way, continue to help people keep warm. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Moore. So we have no other additional people, do we, Madam Clerk?
No, Council President.
Move the resolutions.
The public comment on the res, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I apologize.
No, that's okay, go ahead.
Move the resolutions.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes. Now, we'll move on to items for discussion by the council. First, I just want to address a few things. There was a murder that took place on February twenty-seventh, and an arrest for, first, I want to just send prayers out to the victim's family. And then there was a joint statement issued by Director Caputo and Middlesex County Prosecutor Saco, that an arrest was made, and the person was charged with murder and the first degree unlawful possession of a firearm, and for unlawful purpose, used for an, and it's an ongoing investigation, so there won't be any further comment on that. There's also been no additional arrest made on the Delafell Street issue. And just a reminder that our police department continues to follow, you know, the rigorous level of scrutiny to remain compliant with all reporting requirements. And I don't have any additional comments tonight. Do any other council members have anything they'd like to say?
No, Madam President.
No, thank you.
Okay, well, now, thank you. Next, I'll ask Director Rawls if he could please give us an OEM COVID update.
Good evening, this is Joseph Allen. Director Rawls is unavailable this evening, so I'll be giving the report on behalf of New Brunswick Management. So as we've seen, COVID-19 numbers across the state continue to decrease, although at a slower pace more recently. That still holds true in the City of New Brunswick as well. Nonetheless, health officials still are pushing our due diligence and vigilance against new variants and the continued effectiveness of vaccines. COVID-19 vaccination and vaccines themselves continue to improve in availability, especially with our own Johnson &amp; Johnson down the street joining the fight in providing the newest vaccine that is actually going to be hitting the streets this week, if it has not so already. Vaccination can now be done at select pharmacies in addition to the county health service locations, and all vaccination locations are by appointment only. Those who are eligible for vaccines will expand again on March fifteenth, so about a week and a half from now. The new additions will include educators and support staff for pre-K through twelve, childcare workers, public and local transportation workers, public safety workers that were not previously included in the first responder groups, and those who are homeless and living in shelters will also qualify for vaccines effective March fifteenth. Locally, vaccination locations include the Heltrich Hotel, which is run by the county, and then there's also the Rite Aid on George Street. In order to schedule appointments, you have to go through the various different places. So for the county one, through the county website or through their hotline, which I'll give in a moment, and for Rite Aid, you can actually book it directly through the Rite Aid website. For a complete list of the locations throughout the county and the state, you could take a look on our website at cityofnewbrunswick.org. And again, for the statewide list, you can look on the New Jersey COVID-19 website, which is covid19nj.gov. Free testing will continue downtown on George Street on Monday, March eighth, from eight thirty to noon. You can register on our city website by visiting the calendar and clicking on the eighth. This will also occur every Monday throughout the month of March. In addition to that, there is free COVID-19 testing at Unity Square Community Center on Remsen Avenue on Tuesday, March ninth, from ten to two. No appointment is necessary for that location, and that will also continue on Tuesdays in March. COVID-19 testing through Middlesex County Office of Health Services, they actually had appointments today at their Biscataway location on Erickson Drive. They have not yet announced their dates for next week, but it will likely continue to be at the Biscataway location on Erickson Drive. To schedule appointments for testing, middlesexcountynj.gov/covid19testing, or you can call seven three two seven four five thirty-one hundred to make an appointment. Lastly, as I'm sure many of you may have heard over the past several, almost a year now, we continue to post podcasts on our city website every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and we also continue to post information on our social media and city website regarding COVID-19. And that is all. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Allen, for all that important information. And next, we'll move on to the public comment portion of the meeting. At this time, we're preparing to open the meeting for public comment for up to five minutes per person, one time. Madam Clerk, will you please prepare a list?
Yes, Council President. If any wish to address the council, please state your name when the appropriate letter of the alphabet is called. A through D. E through H. I through L.
Marge Kerber.
Charlie Cradaville.
Okay. M through P.
Danielle Moore.
Okay, Ms. Moore. Q through T. U V. W through Z.
Just want to make sure you got Marge and me.
Yes, Mr. Cradaville, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone A through Z who would like to address the council? This will be the last call, A through Z, for the public portion of the meeting. Madam President, the first speaker on the list is Marge Kerber.
Thank you.
Ms. Kerber, can you please state your name, spell your last name, and your address for the record?
Sure. Marge Kerber, K-E-R-B-E-R, two Comstock Street. First, I would like to thank Tony Barber. I'm sorry?
I just said, thank you, the floor is now yours.
Oh, okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I do that every time, I think. I'd like to thank Tony Barber, who took care of the snow situation on the sidewalks at two Baldwin Street. Okay, but my concern now is a police officer who I had contact with last night, who refused to prepare a ticket or tow a car that was illegally parked. Okay, what happened was, at about eleven fifteen, I went out to walk my dog, and I noticed that there was a car blocking the driveway of my neighbor's house. Okay, the lights were out on the house, I know they go to bed early. When I got back from the dog walk, I called dispatch, and they told me they were going to send somebody out to talk to me. Okay, I no sooner hung up than two police cars came barreling down Comstock Street, okay, and I managed to tail one down, okay, and he stopped his car, he didn't even pull over, he stopped in the street, he opened the door, came out, and left the door open, okay, and came over to talk to me. Okay, his name was Rodricus. After I told him exactly what the deal was, my neighbor gets up at five thirty in the morning to go to work, okay, and right now they're sleeping, so I cannot call them, but I would like to tow, okay, so he can get out in the morning. And Rodricus refused to do that. He said, well, maybe it's their friend. And I said, well, you know what, I've lived in this neighborhood for twenty-five years, and so have they, and a neighbor, a friend of theirs would not park and block the driveway. They would park in the driveway, okay? So I don't know who this is, but again, he gets up early in the morning, and I would appreciate it if you would have the car towed, and he refused to do that, and he told me that, you know, it could be, it could be a friend or something, you know, and maybe they didn't tell you, they gave permission. Well, my problem with that is, number one, it's illegal to block a driveway, I don't care who it is, okay? And secondly, he didn't even give this car a ticket. Okay, he just, he said, well, I'm sorry, I'm not going to have it towed, have the owner call in the morning, the resident of the home call in the morning, and we will tow it. Well, you know what, he got up at five thirty this morning, went to work, and he didn't have time to call you guys, okay? The car was still there, blocking the driveway, so he had to drive out over the curb to get out of his own driveway, okay? His wife woke up a little bit later, and by the time she got up and looked out the window, the car was gone. So meantime, and from what I understand from my neighbor, this isn't the first time that this car has done this, okay? So he parks there, he doesn't even get a ticket. Okay, you don't want to tell him, I understand that, but he doesn't even get a ticket. So that's my complaint about the New Brunswick Police Department. I don't know what they're afraid of, but, you know, but anyway, so that's my complaint, I am not happy. My neighbor, as a matter of fact, called the police- My neighbor, as a matter of fact, called the police department today to also complain, because, you know, come on, this is, it's illegal to block a driveway, no matter who it is. If I blocked my own driveway, I could get a ticket and I could get towed. So I don't know what the problem is, but anyway. And you know what? I think he was just lazy, he didn't want to do anything. That's my personal opinion, but anyway, that's my complaint, that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Kerber. Who's next on the list, Madam Clerk? Madam President, the next person on the list is Mr. Charlie Cradville. Thank you. Mr. Cradville, we have the spelling of your name and address, so the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I'll start by sending prayers to the family of Jose Madera and saying rest in peace to him, the latest victim of gun violence, shot dead in a vehicle just a block away from where I'm addressing you now. And I am somewhat at a loss for, you know, what to do about this problem of gun violence. I know Mayor Cahill still has not commented on any of the murders in the city, and I know he had an event, a public event, on January 20th. Can you ask Mr. Barron, did the mayor have any public events since then? Did he have any public events in February?
Mr. Barron, have there been any public events with the, especially in light of COVID, have there been any events with the mayor?
Sure, Madam President, thank you. Just off the top of my head, there have been some virtual events that the mayor has taken part in since the start of the new year. Nothing really comes to mind in terms of public appearances with the mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Cradville?
Will the mayor ever do a state-of-the-city address again? I know it used to be an annual tradition that at some point he stopped doing every year. If I recall correctly, January 2019 was the last time Mayor Cahill gave a state-of-the-city speech. Is he ever going to do one again?
I know that this was addressed about this year, that there was not going to be one, and I'm sure they, you know, reassess moving forward every year.
Okay, well, I think we need public officials who are going to be visible and upfront and speak about the most pressing issues in the city, and unfortunately, that's not the mayor we have right now. Can anybody tell me, maybe Mr. Valenti, how many sanitation workers were struck by vehicles in the month of February?
Mr. Valenti, do you have any information on this? This is the first I'm hearing of that, Mr. Cradville.
A set of patients was struck on Eastern Avenue when they were collecting garbage. There was several other accidents regarding with injuries, but not specific to a vehicle, an independent vehicle striking a worker.
Thank you.
Okay, so there was at least one worker struck in a motor vehicle accident. Was that reported to the police? Did the police do an investigation?
Yes, ambulance with dispatch to the scene. The worker was taken by ambulance to the hospital, complete police reports conducted.
I do think that, you know, the city needs to do a better job with things like potholes and snow plowing, and I don't take, I don't put any of the blame on the men and women who work doing these difficult jobs, working these hours, but I do feel that there's a shortage of staff to do these things, and for that reason, our roads are among the worst in the area, the snow plowing was among the worst in the area, and it's a function of, you know, this department, DPW, being short-staffed and, you know, people getting injured on the job. And I think that the city needs to address this and do better, in particular, the management needs to staff up and make sure that there's enough people to do this, and also not allow this recycling vendor to get away with, you know, not doing their job and sticking these fine workers with more responsibilities. But I guess the big thing I wanted to address is the gun violence, and so I will give the report that the police should be giving at this meeting, that aggravated assaults are up approximately 72% in February versus January. I have in front of me the incomplete documents that Deputy Director Miller provided, and I can see that there were eight aggravated assaults in January, the three that he missed.
Council President, the next person on the list is Ms. Danielle Moore. Thank you. Ms. Moore, we have your name and your spelling and address, so you can just address the council.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me? Hi, yes, Danielle Moore, 333 Somerset Street. First question I would like, is there someone in there from the inspection department?
What is your question, Ms. Moore?
I would like to, my question is, is there a law in New Brunswick, New Jersey, required, I know some states that are, that while, that for any renter, someone who's renting a place, due to where their windows has to be inspected in order, let me see if I'm saying this right, if the power goes out, that the windows must support over 62-degree temperature?
I'm not sure about that, but I can get particulars for you, or I can have someone reach out to you with that information.
Yeah, yeah, yes, please do, because this is the same thing I mentioned two months ago, why I said, all the mayor does is care about taking taxpayers' money and not doing inspections, proper inspections, to anyone who is renting. I'm not going to make any further more comments on it, due to where I was made a deal where not to worry anymore, but New Brunswick is horrible with inspecting places to be rented out to make sure they are safe for residents. And New Brunswick needs to do a better job than that with their inspection department. It's very poorly. I'm not going to comment anymore, due to where, like I said, I made a deal. Now, as far as recycling, even though I have missed meetings for about two months, it's very funny how Ms. Donna, she retired right after I said the scam through the, with the recycling company and the barrels and with these plastic bags, but bags, due to where, what, it was, like I said, a scam for the residents to buy the bins for $9.95, get ticketed, and wow, where, like I said, on video, you still show the areas where the recycling company is still collecting the bags. Due to where I say, if the city would have stuck with waste management, that was the best company where had everyone tying up their boxes, everything was neatly done, and ever since they switched from waste management, the recycling company has been horrible. And I hope that the city does look forward to going, maybe making a deal with waste management, because it's creating a bigger situation for us with garbage sitting all over in New Brunswick, due to where with this company and just with these bags. And like I said, when I mentioned it, it strains how Ms. Donna retired a month, maybe two or three weeks after I mentioned the scam, especially I have it on video. The recycling, the situation is horrible. And the next thing, I would just like to talk with the code blue, I didn't get a chance to talk at the last meeting. Is Mr. Jones on?
I'm here, Ms. Moore, you can address everything through me.
No, 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 I would like to speak to Ms. Jones, you're not in everybody, every department, you cannot speak for everyone, you're just the president, you cannot speak for certain departments.
Ms. Moore, everything goes-
Don't waste my time, please, I want to-
I'm not wasting your time, everything goes through the-
Please, do not interrupt, I want to speak to Mr. Jones, not you.
You're out of order, Ms. Moore, you're out of order, you're out of order. Everything goes through the chair. If you have direct questions for Mr. Jones, you can call him.
Please, due to where, I would like to ask Mr. Jones on questions, what is the other towns next to New Brunswick that has code blue?
I believe, uh, Famboy is the other town that has code blue.
So Holland Park doesn't do code blue anymore?
They may have one of their own programs. Yes.
See, this is why I said that you do not know everything, due to where, this is why I said, Mr. Jones, and all you're doing is killing my time.
Ms. Moore, I'm telling you, you're out of order right now. I did not say I know everything, I said the meeting is run, all questions go through the chair, it's not a question and answer session with the-
Stop wasting my time, the same thing you do at the public board.
With people from the department, if you keep arguing with me, I'm going to allow Mr. Jones to answer your-
I guess he's-
If you'll let me speak, I'm going to allow Mr. Jones to answer your question.
No, I don't want you to kill my time, no.
The way the meetings work, the questions go through the chair. Your time has expired. Council President, we have no more members to the public on the list? Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Madam President?
Yes.
If I may, if Deputy Director Miller or his representative at the next meeting could tell us about the law in regards to towing vehicles, my understanding is that it's only the owner who can request it, so maybe he can get back to us at the next meeting with the ordinances or the law.
Right, and I would think that they probably were able to speak with the owner when the owner called. Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
What about the boy? Have Deputy Director Miller respond to the concerns of-
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Socorah Ludwig.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.